Can you guys hear me? Give me a thumbs up if you can. Okay. I'm looking at the participants here. I see four committee members, I believe, at the moment. So let's give a few minutes, see if anyone else is kind of logging. And I see presenters for Mariners Cove. And I believe I see Del Monte as well. There you go. Okay. Yes, I can, Audrey.
Okay, great. I'll mute now that I have my audio worked out. Thank you.
Yeah, I think everyone's muted by default. I'm going to do my best to to control it from here if somebody leaves something on because we tend to get a lot of feedback when that happens. Some people still joining here. Hopefully, hopefully you guys can't hear the crying in the background.
I'll be happy to share my own if that will make you feel better.
I'm going to go ahead and pull up the agenda here while we're waiting.
Everybody high from Las Vegas.
Yeah, that doesn't look like Ocean Beach there, George.
That happens to be the cause.
You'll see an Anthony show up. That's actually the host computer that I'm using. That's I'm controlling. So I'm gonna leave this up here for a few more minutes and then we can get started. I've got a few people trickling in here, but I think we do have a quorum here to get started. So let's few technical things here. I'm going to beam this meeting over to our Facebook. What was your Facebook account? Oh. All right, well, the Facebook might take a minute to get started here. This, this is being recorded. This is the October 21st meeting of the Ocean Beach Planning Board. And my name is Kevin Hastings. I am the Vice Chair of the Board and I chair this committee. So I just want to clarify, the purpose of this committee is to review projects in their whatever state they happen to be in when they come to us. And we make recommendations to the full board who then will consider the project, you know, if it's complete enough to consider it. And they will take our recommendations into account and they will provide the required city recommendation that you guys need to fulfill your cycle comments. So the first item on the agenda, I'm calling this order at 6:10 p.m. And I want to make sure that we have a quorum from the committee members. Can you guys unmute yourself and introduce yourself as well? That was Craig Klein.
Jane Goransky.
George McConnell.
Richard Nerman.
Are you there yet, Chris? May join us later. And it sounds like Virginia is not with us as well. So that's five members. So we do have a quorum. So the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have that here on my screen. You guys have all received that in advance. There is two items today. The Del Monte Companion Unit Project and then the Mariners Cove Project. Can I get a motion to approve or amend that?
To approve the agenda as submitted.
I second.
Thank you. And the next item, the minutes from our previous meeting. Now that would have been back in that would have been in June, actually. And you guys have received those as well. I'll pull them up while I'm waiting for a motion. So this was 4775 Pescadero and it's like 4614 Cape May. If you haven't read these already, you're not going to have time to do it now.
I'll move approval of the minutes as submitted. This is Jane.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. I guess we should probably vote on those things. The agenda, we didn't vote. Is anyone opposed? I'm going to go with that first. Unmute yourself if you want to oppose the agenda approval. I'm going to do a roll call vote on on these items, on every item today. I'm a yes on the agenda and the minutes. Craig, I heard you say yes.
Yes, yes, yes on the agenda, yes on the minutes.
Okay, Jane. Jane moved both of these. So I'm assuming that's a yay on both of these. George, are you a yes on minutes and agenda?
Yes.
And Richard?
A yay on the agenda and I abstain on the the other one because I wasn't here in the June meeting.
Excellent. That was a test. We passed. So the first item on our agenda is the Del Monte Avenue Project. This is on the 4600 block of Del Monte. I'm just going to cover basically what's in the agenda here and then I'll let the applicants take over. This is a coastal permit to remodel an existing garage. It has a workshop on the second floor and it's being converted to a 400 square foot companion unit. And this is in the RM11 zone. The presenters should have the ability to pop up their own screen sharing. I'll start mine. If they have trouble doing so, I can do it online.
Kevin, I got a question.
Yeah.
Why is this supposed to develop this permit if all they're doing is changing something, moving in and some footprint?
Well, I think every, every companion unit records a coastal development permit. All right, I can see your presentation here. You guys can start far away. Let us know. Walk us through the presentation. What I'm going to do here to keep this organized, I'm going to go to Board Clarification Questions after you're done. I want all the, the committee members to keep their opinions to themselves at that time. And just if there's something that wasn't clear in the presentation, you know, obvious questions, how hot, how tall is it, things like that, that'd be the time for that. Then I'm going to open it to public comment. I'm going to close public comment. And then we're going to do the final board comment and vote. And this is going to be for both items today. So take it away, Audrey.
Great, thank you, Kevin. And thank you for allowing me to present this evening. It's nice to see some new faces. I don't get out a whole lot. Stuck to my neighborhood. So it's awesome to see some new faces. So this project here is on Del Monte. As you know, this first image is the finished product. The only thing we wanted to do, I'll show you, there's a little parapet on the top, on the top that doesn't quite fit the neighborhood and doesn't quite fit matching with the main house. So I'll show you that. This is the site here on Del Monte at the top of the hill. This here's the map right there, if you can see that, just to kind of orient yourself to the location here. And we've got the main house here, which we're not doing anything with. This has a deck. And then this is a garage and a permitted workshop on top. And so we're essentially converting that workshop to a companion unit. It's 404 square feet, so it's under the requirement for needing any parking. But the city does tell us that for any companion units, we need to have present at coastal and the local planning. So this is the site here. The main house right here. And then this is ground level. There's a shed underneath the deck. And then the companion unit here above the garage. And we've gone through and submitted everything with the building department. They have looked at all the plans and they're happy with the site and all the existing permits of the garage and workshop above. And so we're here presenting today to get your recommendation, hopefully. The site is about 3,500 square feet, existing house of 1479, existing garage 404. Then the companion unit will go into the top floor. Again, all existing space, we're not adding on to anything. And we're not going over the FAR as well. So no change in FAR, no change in footprint. And so there'll be very little impact to the site in terms of construction. This is the front of the house on Del Monte. And this is where that flatter roof comes into play that we wanted to mimic that roof edge. This is across the street. So there's a mixture of one and two story homes. And then this is the alley view. So when this was built, they had a little decorative parapet there. And we thought might be a little bit more consistent with the rest of the site if we straightened that out. So we want to just trim that right there. It's sticking above the parapet and above the roof. There's a one car garage below and then there's some parking off the back here as well. This is again more of the main house with the flat roof. And then this is, this is an interior view of the house, the interior of the site. And this is the alley view here. And then this is where we wanted to, this is an interior view, existing stairs. And we wanted to again crop that off. So it's a little bit more consistent with the rest of the stuff. There's the alley view there with the existing garage, all the same windows, all the same siding. So very little work there. This is a floor plan showing the existing garage and then existing stairs going up. This was a workshop, so we're going to make it a one bedroom and, and put in a little kitchenette. Let me know if you want to look at these anymore, if you've had a chance to look at them, or we can go back and, and I can answer any questions. This is the site again.
What's that space next to the garage?
Pardon me?
What is that space next to the garage on the first floor?
It's just storage. It's just a little bit larger garage. Let me go back to that here. Yeah, this is just, you know, extra, extra stuff.
Okay, so you could have
It's not wide enough to be a second parking space. This is only 16 to 11. So we couldn't get two spaces in there.
Gotcha. Okay.
When they had, when they built it, happily, it was not, not possible. It's still not possible. So, very question though.
Yeah. Do you, do you, do you have a separate gas meter and electric meter for the unit?
Excellent question. We are not having separate meters. So no site work, no separate meters, not digging anything up. It's, it's small enough. And doesn't, doesn't draw a lot of electricity or gas. And so we're just able to share those meters. Does anybody, would anybody like to look at any of the pages or maybe have any questions? I, I don't know if you had a chance to look at this before the meeting.
Yeah, it looks pretty clear to me what's, what it's doing. Well, actually I have a question. The what is up there now? You said workspace. It kind of looked like a living unit. I mean, you're just basically permitting what's there with some changes. Is that, is that what's going on?
Yeah, there's, it's just an open room with a bathroom that was permitted. And so we're going to put in the stove and the refrigerator and just finish it off so that it has a little kitchenette.
Okay.
Back to you, Kevin, then.
Yeah, I, I think this is a straightforward one here. I assume most of the people that are standing by are waiting for the next project. But I want to open this to public comment. If anyone, a member of the public only would like to speak on this. And hopefully you've had a chance to see that these documents as well from our website. And probably check on the chat window just to be safe. All right, I guess we're not too controversial here. I don't see any public comment. And I want to switch next to board comment. I'm going to go first. Maybe leave it on there because someone might want to refer to part of this. And then maybe you can pull up the relevant page. I want to start in reverse order. I'm going to start with, with Richard on this. Richard, fire away.
I don't think I have any questions other than is there a bathroom in the top unit?
Yes.
Existing or is that what you're adding?
That's existing, right here in the corner.
Roger that. Thank you.
If you, if you guys want to move to approve or something else on this, at any time, you can, you can fire away with that during your comment. George, you're next. What do you got?
I have no comments. Looks good to me. I suggest we move to approve.
All right, I'm going to take that as a motion. Do we have a second? Jane, do you have any commentary on this one?
I don't. My question was answered.
Okay, great. How about you, Craig?
I just accepted the motion. No, I don't, I, I, I don't need to know what we are. From my standpoint, it's no change at all, so I haven't had any problem ever doing it before.
And yeah, I concur with Craig. One thing I noticed, the it says two parking spots required. I know you're not adding to the house itself. The site only has one, and I guess I'm curious, did the city miss that or am I, am I missing something? Do you have an answer to that one, Audrey?
Sure. What the city is requiring is to preserve the existing parking, which we're doing in the permitted garage, the one space in the permitted garage. There does happen to be a little bit longer driveway in the alley right here. And so there can be addition, you know, you can still park there as well. It's just not, it's just not on the plan. So that's.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a legal size spot, but yeah, it looks like you could probably wedge something in there.
Definitely, yes. Informal parking, yep.
I also wanted to mention, and just so you're aware, the, the companion unit, the new companion unit law is pro tivet rentals of less than 30 days. So I just wanted to, they'll probably make you sign something that says exactly that in affidavit.
Yeah, the owners will be, will have to notarize that and definitely take care of that, of course.
Okay, with that said, we have a, a motion on the floor to approve the project. I'm going to interpret that as a motion to recommend the full board approves the project. But that's fine as stated. I want to call for a roll call vote. I'll go first. I'm a yay.
Yay.
Jane, George?
Yay.
Richard?
Yay.
All right, that's unanimous, quick and easy. So, so Audrey, if, if you are prepared, I did look at the plan check comments and they're pretty complete. So I don't, I don't foresee the chair having an issue putting this on the next board agenda if, if you want. So I'll forward that to her along with the committee recommendation. All right. So that, that next meeting is going to be in, it looks like in two weeks, if you're ready for that, which it sounds like. November 4. It's going to be at 6:00 PM. But wait on, wait on the chair of the planning board to confirm that with you, okay?
Will do, yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And end your screen. I'm not sure if I can.
I can do that. I'm going to go ahead and mute. Thanks again, everybody. I appreciate it.
I'm going to give this Facebook streaming another shot here.
Hey Kevin, this is Anthony. I got it all set up. You're good to go.
Are we on Facebook now?
I'm double checking right now.
Excellent.
Let's see.
I'll check for my phone here. I'm sure there's probably some interested people on this one.
Yep, you're, you're streaming live. See your pretty face.
Just in time. Hopefully my forehead doesn't blind anyone. So with that said, we're going to move on to the next item. This is Mariners Cove. And let me just do a very quick introduction on that one. So hopefully everyone's aware of what's going on here. So this, this is north of West Point Loma and east of Nimitz, big complex there. There's 500 existing units. This is a permit to demo those units and construct 772 units. The applicants updated me that actually 300 of the units are considered affordable units. There's amenities, there's a cafe, and there's parking on the ground level and subterranean. This is 31 acres. This is a big project. We're probably going to go well over these time limits that are on the agenda here. So with that said, if the applicant wants to give a shot at screen sharing their presentation, we can start with that.
Terrific. While we're getting on the screen, I'm Patty Schwader. I'm Senior Vice President of Aimco. And we are thrilled to be with you tonight. This is a big project and we're really looking forward to your thoughts and comments. I'm here with Derek Ulian, who is going to share this presentation with us, and he's the one who's sharing the screen too. So if it messes up, talk to him. And he's our VP of redevelopment. He's also an architect and has been working on this project for quite a long time. I also have Duke McClarty, our Director of Government and Community Relations, and Ben Hadad from California Strategies is here as well.
All right, someone needs to be muted here.
I hope she's supporting it. Anyway, Derek, why don't you go to the, the next slide? We are very excited to be here tonight as, and thank you, Kevin. It is a big project. A little bit about Aimco, in case you don't know who we are, I always say we're the largest big company you've probably never heard of because we don't brand ourselves as Aimco. We brand our apartments. But we are one of the largest owners of apartments in the country and we're actually in our, finishing our 25th year. We have a large California portfolio, more than 10,000 apartments in 40 communities in the state. And we're a long-term owner of apartments in San Diego with more than 2,300 homes. We're committed to San Diego as well. Our chairman of the company was born here along with his brothers and sisters and still calls it his original home. We're also an experienced owner of affordable housing. At one point, we were the largest owner of affordable housing in the country. And we've owned Mariners Cove since 2002. We, we're a company that likes to be a good neighbor. We buy properties in great locations that we hold on to and invest in communities. And it's in that spirit which we're here talking to you tonight. We also have a great corporate citizenship program where each of our team members do work in the community. And I mentioned that to you in case you have projects that you would like us to work on together. So Derek, you want to move to the next slide? Please. Existing conditions, you all know where this is. You see the Barnes tennis court, the Formosa slough, slough. And the project, which is a, a, a number of buildings surrounded by a sea of asphalt and very old dated planning principles. And it needs a lot of love and needs a, more than a facelift. So Derek, why don't you go to one? It, while we've maintained it over the years, it's obsolete. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through. So what, what do we want to do here? We, we looked at that obsolete complex and we said, well, you know, maybe we could just fix it up, add some siding, redo it. And given the cost and the fact that the infrastructure was very old, we decided to go big. So we're going big or going home, I guess here. So what we want to do is really create a community that enhances your neighborhood, our neighborhood, consistent with the Ocean Beach Community Plan. And we've done a lot of studying of the community plan, which we'll talk about later. This is a great opportunity to contribute to the regional housing needs. And we know that San Diego has enormous housing needs. And we're talking about market rate and attainable housing here. Cost is this is probably 400 million in private investment at our cost, no cost to taxpayers. And of course, there'll be development impact fees and all sorts of stuff that can improve parks and recreation facilities in the area. So the gist of it is 500 apartments, as Kevin said, we, we're going to take them all down in phases. And Derek will talk about that. Construction of 772 brand new apartments and amenities for all the residents. It's an increase in density of 272 apartments, and that's already allowed by right. As Kevin said, 300 apartments will be affordable, 80, 100 at 80% AMI and 200 at 100% or 120% AMI. And the, the rest are going to be really 472 to address mainly workforce housing and missing middle. We'll have a variety of floor plans, a variety of cost points, price points, and hopefully a very robust community with a very diverse set of residents. Derek, you want to go to the next one? So zoning, a, a lot of different zoning areas. As Kevin said, it's 31 acres. It's in your community, RM24. Got, got a lot of stuff to go through here as we move through entitlements, coastal height limit, airport environs, airport approach, transit priority area, parking impact, sensitive coastal overlay zone, and fire and fire hazard. And you see the density in the parking outlined here. Want to move to the next one? It's a, it, it's a great transit connectivity area. We're looking at a transit oriented development in a transit priority area. So there's all sorts of opportunities to connect to transit, more housing, and connect to open space as well. Next. Okay, Derek, I'm going to turn it to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Thank you to the committee here for giving us the time tonight to present this project. What you'll see here on the screen right now is a rendering that's superimposed over the existing site. And if you can recall from sort of the earlier slide, the major difference here is changing that sea of asphalt and sort of these one-off little individual buildings that was designed in that 1980s planning principle to do a more group design and really turning that asphalt over to open space and green space. You know, in, in taking great care in that overall design and concept that we came up with, we really look to, to your guiding principles, the Ocean Beach Community Plan, that you guys spent, you know, so much time and so many hours thinking of what was important to the Ocean Beach community. And as that Mariners Cove is already existing in the community, we've owned it for about the last 18 years. We take that community planning seriously as well. So with each one of the moves and design elements that we put into this overall project, we made sure that it was consistent with the community plan, really highlighting the urban design, you know, making sure that the buildings didn't look like they just dropped out of nowhere. Ocean Beach has a great urban fabric of, you know, eclectic nature and design throughout that's been built, you know, over many years. So we took that into heart, creating different neighborhoods and, and different influences from the overall community. Conservation, really taking it the next step to make sure that our landscaping is not only native but drought tolerant. And mobility, and we, we've got a great bike path here in Ocean Beach community. We want to connect to it. We want to promote the walkability of the overall community. So making sure that not only the internal community is, is walkable by design, that then promotes people actually connecting to the outside surrounding areas and, and using it for walkability as well. And then parking. This is a, a, a community map, and the reason why we keep this in the overall presentation is really to highlight the diversity of the overall project that we're coming to you with. There's 772 units and no two are alike. We really want to capture a wide breadth of, of the overall community, just like Ocean Beach is. So we have everything from studios to three and four bedroom townhomes over, designed into this plan. And each one of these blocks here, block one, block five, block three and four, all have different architectural characters, different amenities, and just different design elements that make them unique, similar to how you would think single family homes next to one another would be. These are some early stage renderings that the team has pulled together. And as you can see, we're really focused on that community oriented, oriented design. Up here, the, the rendering to the left is a different community than the one on the right, and so on and so forth. So really creating those diverse neighborhoods. Something that was really important in the Ocean Beach plan is sort of the, the variability on the overall facade. So the push and the pull. We do have a 30-foot height limit here. It's kind of hard to not just put, to put up a building that looks like it got a buzz cut and, and the buildings look like these boxes over the, over the top just to play within that 30-foot height limit. So we really pressed the team and ourselves to really articulate within that 30-foot height limit and get these pitch roofs and these pulls and plays rather than just maxing out what the volume is. And then units laid out along courtyards, making sure that, that you, you really get to celebrate that San Diego indoor/outdoor lifestyle. So you're not confined. And especially in the new COVID world where being outside is, is really your respite from being working at home and being stuck at home. We incorporated the high-quality landscape in those open courtyards and common areas and dedicated dog parks as well. Sustainable design has been a core value of Aimco for some time, a, a, as well as California and Ocean Beach. And the Cal Green Code of 2020, which would be the standards that, that we have to build and design this to, is some of the most stringent in the country. So some of the measures that, that will be incorporated in this overall project is photovoltaic panels in order to offset the energy usage. Open landscape and green space with stormwater controls and BMPs. Right now, it sort of just runs off into the stormwater system because that was okay in the 1980s. But now, you know, not only do we want to reuse the stormwater for our own landscape, but we want it to filter through the landscape so that it takes the particulates out before it gets to the stormwater systems. Recyclable water supply for indoor use and construction waste reduction, as well as low flow plumbing fixtures and a, and a resident recycling program. We do plan to phase this overall development. We have affordable residents with us on site. And it is important to Aimco to keep them on site as well as our market rate residents. So we've come up with a high-level concept of how we can maintain as many units in service throughout the lifecycle of this project. This is a high-level diagram of how we're sort of designing the overall architecture on the project to be phased through construction. I'm not going to go into the nitty-gritty of the numbers here, but essentially this blue area here, sort of designing this as a, as a clockwise construction phasing, starting here at the front of the project, taking down this section of the project. And while that section is down, building back this other, this other phase of the project. At that point, we'll have more units online than we had before we started. And so just sort of continuing to work clockwise through the overall project, taking down this red zone and building back this new neighborhood. Then taking down this yellow zone and building back this new neighborhood. And then finally taking back this blue zone and coming with the complete overall project. And just to sort of clue you in on where we are on, on the timeline. So we, we've started the, the environmental studies and documentation. We're working with the city of San Diego right now. We're hoping to have a notice of preparation out in, in December. We, we will require a coastal development permit on this project. This is one of those unique white hole projects where they were the original permit issuer. So we'll go through coastal commission. We have submitted for our SDP back in, in, in April. And we're in the official first review stage. We've passed our mandatory initial review and we're working with Martin as our project manager with the city of San Diego. We, we plan to get to planning commission and city council hearings by Q1 of next year and hope to have a building permit in the spring of 2022 and start construction right around then. Because of the phasing of the, of the overall project, we look to complete this summer around the summer of 2025. And I will turn it over to Patty.
Okay, and this long list of the development team is not for you to memorize, but to show you that there's plenty of names that you know. In San Diego, it's generally a San Diego-based team. And it's going to be a terrific team that is responsive to the community and to the city as well. So I think we're on our 10 minutes and love ending with the movie nights. Hopefully when it's done, you can all come. Hopefully, when it's done, you can all come over for a wonderful movie night when we can go outside and COVID is over together and enjoy this really brand-new, exciting project for the city of San Diego, which we hope and trust will really enhance the neighborhood and the city in which we live. So that's it, Kevin, for our prepared presentation. Would love to turn it back to you and hear your questions, comments, thoughts, and advice.
Thank you for that. I want to first start with any clarification questions that any members have on the presentation. But again, if you have any opinions on the project, let's save those until we're getting towards voting. Thank you. I'm going to go in, let's go in a different order. Let's start with Craig.
I don't think you have any questions.
I'm in trouble, Craig.
Yeah, Craig, can you, are you able to type in the chat box? Or find it better, maybe call, your audio is.
My audio is not working?
It's pretty carbon.
Okay, I'll.
Oh, it just got really good.
Okay, it just got really good? Okay.
Stick with that.
Okay, we'll stick with that. I guess my, I'm not certain that this is consistent with the Ocean Beach community character. Maybe I'm just old-fashioned.
Craig, hold on, hold on.
Okay, no questions.
I want to give the public a chance to comment before we start chatting about what we think about.
No, I'm going to wait until, I'm going to wait until we have the plans. Okay.
Thank you. Jane, did you have any questions on the presentation?
Yes, I do have a question. The affordable housing spread throughout the unit, is it all contained in one section?
It's spread throughout the entire project.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, George, you got, you got any questions on this one? Like I said, we'll have a chance for commentary later.
No questions.
Okay. Richard?
No questions.
Okay, I've, I've got a bunch of questions here.
Kevin? This is Chris. Can I, can I just ask a question?
Hey, Chris, when did you join? Did you hear the first action item?
Yeah, and I thought you might, no, I didn't. I thought you might have noted it on the chat function. I came in at 6:28.
Okay, I'll count you as, on this one at least.
Yeah, I got, I got, I got this for one. So thanks to Anthony. Derek or Patty, can we just quickly go back to the slide that showed the, the numbers that folks that would be relocated? I was, I was taking notes and I had an opportunity to look at my previous notes a little bit, but I wanted to make sure they, they validate.
Is this the slide?
Is this the slide?
No, a little bit before that.
I think we just passed it.
Yeah.
This is a hint mix. But it doesn't call out.
It wasn't, it's not this one. It was.
The face development and relocation, Derek, number 13, I think. Is this the one, Chris?
Affordable residents will remain on site.
Yeah, this is it.
Okay, great.
So I don't necessarily have a question. I just wanted to make sure I took all this in. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And this is an important slide to us and the community. We know construction and redevelopment is hitting the neck. And we've done this very successfully throughout the country in many, many developments. And our goal is to move as many people as want to stay around the site at our cost and make it as, I don't want to say painless, make it as easy as possible with them. We have a resident location person who will be assigned to the site. And, you know, for people who want to leave, we can certainly house them in any of our other communities in the area or even around the country. We have a coast-to-coast program. If this is your time that you want to move to Florida and you want to, we can accommodate that too. And then, you know, we're in the business of keeping residents, not putting them out. So our current residents have the first opportunity to rent at the new community since we value them and we know many of them have been great residents for a long time. Love the location and want an upgrade.
Thanks, that was good for me.
I'm going to go ahead and start here. What, what variances are you guys asking for on this?
I can pass that one over to Elizabeth. Who's our lead with MW Steel.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Ocampo with MW Steel Group. We are allowed to have five incentives per the Affordable Housing Regulations, but we're only proposing to use the following. To allow for a setback reduction, to allow, the second one would be to allow for a 50% reduction of the residential storage required per code. The third one would be to allow mixed-use development, which would only be at the deli, our cafe identified as the Quonset Hut, for allowing for eating and drinking establishment. And then we are proposing a deviation from standard to allow for the westerly driveway at the main entrance to remain at the existing width.
Okay, why does that? Is enough room for cars turning right and left going out of there?
I think it's about 50 feet. But Brian Smith from Fusco can clarify if needed.
That's close enough. So my next question, is there any official affordable housing units at the site right now?
Yes, same amount. There is 100% Section 8 HUD subsidized housing. Those 100 units and then the 200 at 120 AMI.
Okay. 100% AMI, you were referring to?
Yeah, 100 to 120% AMI. And that is also required by a ground lease on the property that we have with the San Diego Housing Commission.
Kevin, just to clarify, it's 100 at 80 AMI and 200 at 120 AMI.
That's current?
That's current.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, okay, I think I know the answer to the market rate, or sorry, the rent on those units. Let me see here. The proposal, does that, does that meet the July 1st changes to the affordable rules? Or is this something prior to that? Or does that not even apply on this? Because I know the affordable, the inclusionary housing changed on July 1st.
The inclusionary housing is something that we're, we're working through right now.
All right, what about noise mitigation by the freeway? It looks like there's a building that's alongside there that currently is carports.
Existing or in the proposed plan are you referring to?
In the proposed one.
Elizabeth, can you take this one?
I, oh, sorry. I can get started and then I'll probably ask Jennifer Suker from DUDAC to shine in. So as part of our environmental analysis for the project, we are conducting a noise report that assesses existing and future noise. Some of the mitigation will be identified as needed with. Jennifer, do you, do you have more information about it?
Yes, I mean, you covered it perfectly. We are undergoing a full comprehensive noise study as we speak and any mitigation that might be required as the project is proposed, which would also mitigate for interior noise as well as exterior noise. That will all be covered in the environmental analysis and the noise report.
Great.
If mitigation is needed, it will be included in the full environmental documentation for the.
Okay, have you guys done condo conversions on any of your other properties?
No, and the reason is, is that we're an apartment company. We're a real estate investment trust and we can only do apartments.
Okay, the cafe that Quonset Hut, is that going to be open to the public?
Yes.
Yeah.
The plan is to have that open to the public. And in speaking with the Barnes Tennis Center, they were quite excited about that as an amenity for, for their, their guests and customers.
Let's see, the, you have a policy on subletting and Airbnbs?
Yes, we do. All of our properties around the country, we, every single lease does not allow subletting and Airbnb. And we enforce that quite heavily.
Okay.
Anyway, the answer is no.
Sounds good. The, the grading on the site, I noticed the existing is about 15, 17 feet grade, and that's being excavated for a garage. What's the, is there a new baseline being used for the measurement? What's, I guess, what's the, what's the new grade that is going to be used to establish the building heights?
Elizabeth, this is another one that I'd like to pass over to you to get the clear answer.
Okay, so we are, we have included already cross-sections in the development package that you've received, I believe. And the cross-sections that are included, no structures will exceed the coastal height limit. We make the measurements based on the definition included in the municipal code and in the City of San Diego's technical bulletin 5-4. So the grading, we're still working on our grading or proposed grading, but, but our buildings, as we are proposing them right now, they're compliant with the municipal code and the technical bulletin.
Okay. And I went through the cycle comments. One of the major ones I noticed that looked unresolved is they're asking for a 100-foot buffer to, to the slough or plans, I don't know if that's one in the same, where that's measured from. And they said that one of the underground parking garages intrudes in that. Has that been resolved? Or what is, what do you anticipate to resolve that?
If I can answer that one, we had a meeting last week with staff and we clarified that that was an error on our plan set that we are working on correcting. No structures are proposed to encroach within the wetland buffer. And that has been agreed with staff and they understand that that was a mistake on that plan set that included an underground parking encroaching. But that's not what we're, our intent is.
Okay, last question. What are the rents there now? Generally speaking, and then what, what are the new rents going to be?
So the rents now are somewhere in the $2,800 average range. And because it's so early on in the project and we really don't know what the, the world is going to, to look like in 2025, we're not projecting out that far. But given the overall state of the, the market, we look to be somewhere around 150 of AMI in early estimates.
Okay, 2,800, is that, that's now or that's, that's proposed?
That's current rent.
Okay. All right, that's, that's all I've got. There's some people here on the WebEx. Any of you guys would like to make a public comment on this? And this is not going to be your last chance. This still has to go to the, to the full planning board as well. So keep that in mind. This is not the end of the line here. If anyone wants to make a comment, just, I guess, fire away. I'm going to give you up to two minutes per person. And if it gets out of control, I'll try to reel it in here. That's awkward.
Can you hear me, Kevin? I had a question on the rents.
Yeah, go ahead.
That 2,800, is that average across all of the units that are currently existing? And if so, could you break it down in terms of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, that sort of thing? If you can do that on the existing.
Craig, that is the average across. I can get back with the exact breakdown, one, two, and three-bedroom units after, follow-up to this meeting.
That would be good. I think when you, when you present to the full board, you should have that information.
Thank you, Craig.
Speaking of rents, I'm looking on the website and it says like 1,800 to 2,400, starting at, I don't know what that means. Like the one cheap car on the used car lot. It seems to be a lot different than 2,800.
Unfortunately, COVID has had significant impacts to rental rates since March of 2020. So the overall average on the site is higher than what is currently listed for rent today.
Gotcha, that makes sense.
And then on the, on the other hand, you know, we do have 40% affordable there. So that brings down the rents quite a bit.
And we're going to do some more public outreach going forward on this. I actually, I believe the link on the agenda itself did not take it here. So that's my fault. So people that had the email had access or had forwarded the email. That said, this is just a subcommittee, so this is not the last, the end-all, be-all here. If, if there's no public comment on this, I don't see anything in the chat box. I'm going to start with board comment. I want to start with, I'll start with Craig again.
Well, I might just be old-fashioned. I like the existing. I think it reminds me of small cottages in a, I'd refer to it as in a park-like setting, very small-townish and to me is very consistent with Ocean Beach, or at least the Ocean Beach that I like to think about down there, especially on the flats. And I'm just, you know, the closest part of Ocean Beach to this area is the old beach cottage area, which actually has very few block-like apartments, except for a small area along West Pointe Memorial Boulevard. And I'm just not sure that, you know, blocks 1 through 5 are consistent with a small, the small-town community of Ocean Beach. But that's just me. So I'll listen to some other people. But that's just me, so I'll listen to some other people.
Kevin, you're muted, or whoever might be trying to speak is muted.
Jane, uh, do you have comments on this?
Uh, yes, I do. I've been to events at the, at this, at Mariners Cove, and it's a dark and dreary place. And I would wholeheartedly support an upgrade to that, to Mariners Cove.
George, uh, you want to make any comments on this?
Um, I haven't, I don't know what the site looks like now within the area. I do, from what I've seen of what they've drawn up, it looks nice. I kind of agree with Jane. Maybe it'd be nice to get something a little more open and fresher-looking in there.
Thanks, George. Richard, you have anything to say on this one?
Negative. I, I kind of like what they're doing. It may be an improvement.
Chris?
So I had an opportunity to, to review some of these materials, maybe a little bit more in detail in advance a, a little while back, and, um, you know, there were two things that, that were important to me. One was, you know, how many people might be displaced when you're undertaking a project like this? And then the second thing is, of course, our community plan. You know, the, the first piece, it, it sounds like there is a history and, um, you know, recognition of the need to work with the current tenants to, to relocate wherever and whenever possible. So, um, you know, we're, I'm taking the, uh, the team here at, at their word, and, and that's really why I wanted to go back to that slide, just to validate what, what I had previously noted. And, um, I do believe there's, there's a good effort here to do that for the, you know, for the security of the, the current tenants, and I think that has to be, you know, a concern. Beyond that, um, I, I'll echo what some of the other comments have, have just mentioned, where I, I think there's an opportunity to improve the aesthetics of the, of the current, you know, apartment. You know, just, just traveling past there on any given night, it is dark. I think, you know, the plans as they were laid out previously, it's, it's a dated approach, and, and they're really, in my opinion, there haven't been the necessary improvements in some time. And so, um, you know, that gets me looking towards what could we accomplish in sense, in my opinion, the, the proposal and the, and the few renderings I've seen actually do pay good consideration, in my opinion, to, to the community plan that we've created. At this point, I mean, I, I support it for those two areas of focus that I just mentioned. I think thought and consideration to the displacement of tenants, and then what does the new project look like, and how does it consider our, our community plan and, and allow for the rest of this community to potentially enjoy those spaces, including the, the green spaces and the cafe? I think those are all really headed in the right direction, so those are my comments.
Thank you, Chris. I'll start. I, I wanted to, I, I guess I wanted to highlight, the applicants are well aware of this, but there's a lot of unchecked things still on the cycle comments, so I think they have a little ways to go still. And it sounds like there may be a few changes along the way. There, there's a lot of stuff that's completed, but there's still a lot to, I, I think that the full board is going to want to see checked off before they take this up. One of those items was talking about the height measurement on there. And as far as I, it's not clear on the drawings. To me, I did, I did look at the elevations, but it looks, I mean, it looks like this thing is forty feet tall from the existing grade. It's, you know, it's subterranean, so the building is going, going lower, but then also the first floor is starting at a, at a higher point, and then there's ten-foot floors. So, um, it seems to me that there could be an issue there on the heights that might require an adjustment. I don't know if, if, what they would do if, if that comes up as an issue. You know, if they want to, if they're going to lower the floor heights just a bit. I, I did appreciate sort of the variety in architecture there, and the attempt to, to fit some roof, some sloped roofs on some of these things, so I, I hope there's a way to do that, compliant with that thirty-foot limit. The full board is very, you know, they're, they're really going to look at that if there's any, any question or any doubt at all on that. I'll, I'll bring it up then as well. So I hope the applicant can sort that all out with the city. And hopefully, the city does their due diligence as well. One thing that I, I thought was interesting, I believe right now the, the driveway is accessible in two locations into the complex, and this is closing off one side on the east side. And I don't know if that factors in with the traffic studies, or if those have been completed. I just, I see that single driveway outlet onto West Point Loma as, as being difficult, especially considering that that's going to be reduced down to one lane in each direction to put in some dedicated bike lanes. So that, that's something that concerns me. I'll also say that, uh, the, the subterranean parking so close to the slough, I'm a little worried about that. I hope they've got, uh, got pumps in there, and they're prepared to handle any water intrusion into that garage, so we don't have a repeat of what has happened elsewhere in the community. Overall, though, I, I like the concept. It does, I was a little skeptical on the rents and where that was going to go. But I think it does seem to preserve, uh, preserve that. I, I wouldn't really call them affordable, but that's not really the applicant's fault. The Housing Commission defines that. Probably most of these units will be out of reach of most obesions sadly, just based on the income amounts, because we're, uh, we're all broke here apparently. The, so I, I don't know who's going to be moving into these units. Maybe, I guess, new residents from elsewhere, but that's fine. We need to, I think we need to do our part to contribute to the housing, and maybe then the state will be less prone to force it down our throats with high rises and that sort of thing. So overall, I do support the concept. I haven't heard any motion. I don't like to as the chair, I'll let someone else do that, but I, I think I would personally like to see them come back with more of the cycle comments completed before we take this up, and I would like to send this to the full board only once that has happened. This is a pretty major project. I want to get more public input on this before it goes to a board vote. That's, that's my, uh, my feedback. So if anyone wants to make a motion to, to recommend approval, or recommend some changes, or recommend maybe tabling it, all of those are acceptable motions.
Kevin?
Yeah, go ahead.
What, what would you think of having it presented as an information item at the next general meeting rather than as an action item? Because it strikes me that the general community really ought to have the opportunity to view the, uh, the PowerPoint and the presentation by the applicant prior to the board having a vote. And that also would be consistent with your desire to have more of the cycle comments resolved prior to presenting it for the full board for a vote.
It's ultimately up to Andrea on setting the agenda. I, I did ask her sort of a question like that, and she was hoping to sort of get it further along in the committee first.
So I get to, I, I sort of agree with you that, that I think it'd be premature to have this before the full board as an action item for a vote with, Brad, I think really, this is a big enough project that I think, um, well, back in the days, back in the days before COVID, Jane, you can smile at this. You know, back in the days before COVID, there would probably have been a big meeting at the OB Rec or the, or the Masonic Hall with the entire community invited on this before it came to an actual vote. And I think it's a large enough project that that sort of input from the community should be taken.
Yeah, it seems almost like the electronic meetings has actually cut more people out than anything, which is unfortunate. The, I, I do agree with you. I don't know if you want to form that into a motion, or if someone else wants to give a, give something a shot.
I would second Craig's motion.
Can you rephrase that, Craig?
Let me, let me articulate it a little, a little less stream of consciousness. Okay, I would move that, um, this item be placed on the agenda of the full board at the earliest possible time, according to the chair, as an information item, so that more community input could be obtained, and that we should defer putting it on as an action item until such time as more of the cycle comments have been resolved.
Okay, so move to place on the agenda for full board as information item. For more public comment and to complete, let's check. Does the applicant, um, I mean, the full board is meeting in two weeks. I don't know that the applicant's going to have anything new from the city in two weeks. What do you guys think about that?
I think it's unrealistic to think that the city will be able to respond in two weeks. So if we, if we have the applicant as an information item in two weeks, and then a month later have them as an action item.
I mean, this is, this is the largest housing project this board has seen, and probably will receive. So I just want to reiterate that. We don't have a lot of big stuff here.
And from our perspective, we want the public input too, so we're, you know, we've got a long timeline ahead and want you to be comfortable and ask all the questions and have us answer them. So whatever timetable works for you, works for us as well.
Well, would you like that sooner than later, I, I would assume?
Yep, sooner rather than later, just to keep it moving, and also to react and, you know, adjust if necessary to your comments.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And I, I like the, I like the idea of an information item myself. So George, uh, George seconded that. Does anybody else have any final comments?
Well, Patty, and I'm not, not that I'm seeking that there'd be any, you know, pressure applied by the, the applicant, but it would certainly mean a lot to me if I heard from a number of your residents and felt that, and heard from the residents that they were in favor of this. Obviously, you know, there's, there's five hundred people who live there now, and that would be an important thing for me to know, that the people that are living there now want to, think this is a good idea and would like to see, because it's really, in a way, it's their community. It's, this is not part of the Ocean Beach, Ocean Beach as it's defined, you know, bordered on West Point Loma Boulevard and Evers Street. You're on the other side of Nimitz. So I think the input from the people who live in Mariners Cove, yay or aye, would certainly have a very persuasive effect on me.
Thanks, that's a great point. And just to let you know, we, we have looped in and noticed our residents, actually a few weeks ago, when we started this project, and the property has been posted after we were deemed complete. And we've been talking with residents. We've had very positive support. You know, we're not naive to think that everybody's going to love it, but given the fact that, um, uh, most of the residents are going to remain on-site, and they're getting an upgrade, and they, they feel like so many of you do, that hey, it's a little dark and dreary here, and this sounds pretty good to us. But, um, you know, of course, we, we welcome that input, and we're working with them, as we said we would, day to day, to answer any questions they might have. And maybe at the next hearing, you'll have more show up.
Sounds good.
I think that's a proper motion.
Kevin, can I ask a clarifying question? This has been Head Ed.
Yeah, okay.
Strategies, thank you again for doing this tonight. And we, I totally agree with Patty is saying about our, our desire to be as, uh, open and transparent to this community and talk as much as everybody wants. But I just wanted to understand, if Craig's motion passes for the information item, do we then come back to this committee for further deliberation? Or we wait and then come back to the full board for full deliberation once the cycle comments are responded to?
I, I think the idea, his motion was to, to put it in front of the full board, and, and that gives us an opportunity to get more, more input from public and board members. If that happens in two weeks, then, um, you know, I, I don't foresee there being any real changes to the info you guys have provided out. The city, did you guys submit this and are waiting for the city to get back on the next cycle? Is that where we're at?
That is correct.
Okay.
Do you have an updated timeline on when? I know Elizabeth and the team have been working closely with the, the project manager and each of the individual groups within the, within the City of San Diego Development Services to click through and clear these items. So Elizabeth, do you have an update on, on when the next round of clearing comments are?
So we received comments on October ninth. We haven't received the official assessment letter, but we are going through the comments already. We are coordinating with different disciplines. We have meetings lined up. We met last week with LDR Planning, and I just wanted to actually clarify for Kevin's benefit that that comment that was outstanding regarding height, we met with LDR Planning last week, and we got that cleared out. But we continue to meet with multiple disciplines. I would say maybe we are about three weeks away from the next submittal.
Which will spend two weeks or three weeks till we receive the revised round of comments?
Correct.
If we waited until the, there's a few options here, but if we waited until the December, first Wednesday in December, planning board meeting, uh, that would be December second. I see that as an opportunity to put it in front of the full board with the next round of cycle comments. Would that be acceptable to you guys? As an information item? Obviously, we don't run the business of delaying.
It could go as an information item at the November meeting, and then decision-making at the December meeting.
That's another possibility.
I think that would be preferable. That's just so we keep it moving and don't have, you know, a couple of months between visiting with you.
And that was going to be my input here too. It, it really is, is this an opportunity for more information to be provided to the board and have the community feedback? Or is it, is it more focused on updating those comments and then having that be part of the presentation? If it's the former, then I would support having that come in front of the board next month, you know, if possible, if that's what the team would agree with. If it's the latter, you know, I think, I think it sounds like we need at least three to four weeks, so that would be December.
Chris, it, it was my intention for the former, that it would be a forum for the community to weigh in, with more community input.
And it sounds like the team here might agree, but here, Derek, let me know if I'm wrong in that.
No, you're correct. As far as your participation, I, I saw you guys went to the midway group as well. The, what about Peninsula Planning? Have you guys spoken with them about getting on their agenda?
Yeah, I've reached out to them, Kevin, and we're, we're trying to get on their agenda. We actually reached out to them earlier in the year, and they were having, uh, organizational issues, as you probably know, but they've ironed that out, and we do, we are planning to speak with them further. We've said, we had some email traffic between us, but we haven't presented there yet.
Okay. Well, I, I think that timeline sounds fine to me, so if you guys are willing, I'll, I'll check with the chair and see if that works for her. But, you know, the, the committee motion is what the motion is, and we had a second from George. I have that sort of abbreviated here, but the motion on the floor is to place this item on agenda for the full board as an informational item for additional public input. And he also had in completion of more unresolved cycle issues, which we may or may not have. Is that representative motion there pretty well, Craig?
The only, the only change, the clarification I didn't make would be to add and, and then to bring it before the full board as a action item following the resolution of cycle issues.
Gotcha. All right. So we've got a motion and a second.
One, one motion back to see if it's clear from what I proposed.
Yeah, move, move to place this item on agenda for the full board as an information item for additional public input. And then bring it to the full board as an action item following resolution of cycle issues.
Fine.
Can I, can I ask one question on that one?
Fire away.
Only because the cycle issues, some of them wind up trailing on for quite some time. And we are working through closing all those cycle comments. And just in, in the sake of time, this is a large project and so some cycle items could drag on for a few months.
I think the fear is that the board votes on something and then you bring that to the city. And then what's finally approved is something substantially different than that. I'm not saying that that's going to happen here, but it has happened in the past. And that's why the board is hesitant to take positions on projects until there, there's, there's pretty well assured that there's not going to be a significant change, like something's not going to move or get taller or.
And my, my intention is not to require the resolution of each and every cycle issue, but by deferring, say, till the December or perhaps at latest, say, the January meeting, that would give you the opportunity to resolve, I would expect, a significant number of those outstanding cycle issues. So that the board would be comfortable at that point voting to approve or to, or not approve the project.
And sorry to be confusing, but ultimately it's up to the chair on whether your agenda is at the next meeting or to hold off a little longer. It's, it's her discretion as chair. You know, works the same at city council. And sometimes they abuse that, unfortunately. But that's, so it is her discretion that the committee can make this motion. I think it's a proper motion. And, and we can go from there, so.
Can you just read the last part about it again? I think to Derek's question about, did we say it has to be final, all, all cycle comments finally resolved? Or what was the language? I can't remember.
Why don't, can I, can I add a friendly amendment to just saying the major cycle issues?
That's kind of what I was going to do.
Do you find that acceptable, Craig, as a friendly?
Absolutely. Or I was going to say, or a significant number, a significant number of cycle, something of that, something of that nature.
And George, that was your second. Are you okay with that friendly amendment?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, yeah, I'm fine.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to just go ahead and call for a vote. I don't think we're going any further on this. If this motion fails, someone can, can move something else. I'm a yay.
I'm a yay.
Jane? George? George seconded.
Yay.
Richard?
Yay.
And Chris?
Yes.
That's 6-0. Well, I think this was still productive. The motion passes unanimously. I think this was productive to, this is actually how we used to operate the committee, is really just a first look to get, dig into these projects and, and understand these projects. So I think it achieved that at least. So I will send this recommendation to the board chair. And hopefully she can put you guys on the next full board agenda, if you're willing, and we can get some, some more helpful commentary for you guys.
Kevin, question. Have you been in touch with Frank Gormley on this?
Yeah, you know, I sent this to him. I also sent it to SD News, Dave Schwab. And I don't think either of them ran it, so I don't.
What about what former, the former Peninsula Beacon, or whatever that is? No, I think that, that really by the next information item, the community really should be given every possible opportunity to weigh in on this. Because it is the biggest development project that, that I've seen in 20 years.
Yeah, and I, I take some responsibility now, but I think, I think some people were kind of caught off guard by this. At least those, those guys. And I think the election and some of these other things are, are stealing some of the show there. And in fact, what, what is Election Day?
Third.
That's the day before our, our next scheduled meeting. That's not good either. We also have World Series tonight.
Could be fleeing the country. Celebrating.
Well, we'll do what we can, but yeah, that's a challenging, it's a challenging schedule for sure. With that said, that's a unanimous motion. This action item is completed. I'll send you guys an email with the minutes on that, or at least the motion on that for your, for your benefit. And we'll go from there and see if we can get you on the next agenda.
Thanks very much. Very helpful. Really appreciate it, and we look forward to the next time.
Thank you.
And the next item on agenda is officer reports. I don't have any, any of the board members have the board-related reports. Speak up. I will say that we have typically been meeting every other month with the project committee. If we need to, for the sake of some of these, you know, I can always schedule a meeting in between that. The danger is if we do not see these projects and vote on these projects in time and fashion, they can skip over us. So we don't want that. I noticed the applicants left, so they didn't hear that, so that's good. With that said, I think Jane's typing. I'm going to adjourn this meeting and let you guys all, all get back to dinner or whatever you're doing. And we'll get some more input next time.
Very cool.
Sounds good. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Anthony, for helping out with the technical stuff.
You're welcome. Yeah, it's on Facebook, so you're all good.
All right, maybe some people will watch the recording.
Goodnight from Las Vegas.
Good night, George. Be careful, make good decisions.
All right, don't tell me who won the game.